John. Okay, we'll just do audio.
No, no camera. I was gonna say. No, I'm just kidding.
Where's our young lady? Oh, there's right there.
Yes, yeah, and her parents.
All right, everybody got like 30 seconds.
We're actually two minutes over. I gotta get a new battery. Shouldn't have touched you. I like your hat, Deb. It's so cute. It is. A little sage, and I can comb all your hair. I was at the state send-off.
And it was raining.
Yeah. It was windy, too.
Yes, yeah, it has to rain every four months.
Hello, everybody. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. If you didn't get some from somebody, go buy something at the dollar store. Makes yourself feel good. Makes you feel better. All right. It's, the clock's wrong, so I think it's about 6:33. So we call this meeting to order. Deputy clerk, would you take roll call?
Here.
Paratini. Here. Carter.
Here.
Seedorf.
Here.
Hoshkin.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Fredo.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
Gaken.
Here.
Orson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Orr.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, wanna stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve tonight's agenda. I'd like to move to approve tonight's agenda.
Right. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Passed? Open the floor for public comments. Could we please limit it to three minutes? And please give your name and your address or word.
My name is Lynette Taylor. I live in Boulevard Mobile Hall Park. Bill, who is the code enforcement, has been down there a lot, which is really wonderful. I'm not sure if any of you went down there. The last meeting, someone was gonna be down there in the park and say, "Well, lovely pristine park here." Not. But anyways, they are having the people down there move the cars. And one of them, they dismantled it, and an engine was on a hoist down there, and it was very dangerous. They made them move that, which is wonderful. They are going to, as far as I understand, they are going to put cement blocks there. So those, the traffic will not be there anymore for the drug people or the people doing the business in the back. Also, I had talked to them before about the water problem with them turning them off and everything. I have corrected that. I have taken upon myself to help pay for having the water valves and all of those things fixed. Today is all done. I called one company called Brenda, and told her that everything is fixed now. And so far, those two problems have been taken care of. It's still, there's still garbage everywhere, even more. But at least two things are fixed now. And I just wanted to thank the people who are helping at least stop some of the crime and the stuff in our park. And I'm very grateful to you guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being so caring also.
Patty Thomas, Word five. It's kind of with a lot of thought that I thought about coming up and skating this, but I just really feel, you know, I wanna do it. I was reading this newspaper in there about the homeless shelter that's being discussed. And it was stated in there that Aberdeen is ready, willing, and able to be a patron, to be a partner, to bring healing to all the communities in the region. And we're talking about a county shelter in the city of Aberdeen. I am not for that. I don't think the citizens of Aberdeen would necessarily be for that. And I also question why it was released into the press. And I've never heard it voted on by the city council that they were going to undertake something like this or anything has been decided. And I just, it just appears to me that boundaries are being overstpped. And it appears to me that the city's not being considered. And the fact that we do have two sanctions camps, and we have had sanction camp since we put Tassel in, and to continue to not enforce the law is not acceptable. And I'm tired of being quiet about it. I've spoken about this before. I've come down here, talked about it. And I know they're chit-chatting, little old ladies talking, and like pizza. And that's what Patty does. But I've had it. I'm sick and tired of it. I'm sick and tired of people that don't know the truth of the matter and what is going on in the city. And Doug, this has nothing to do with you. You're new and you came about it. And I pray to God that you don't fall into the steps of going along to get along in this city. Because this city has been run by the city and not the council. It is time, and I even talked to the council last month, I believe, about you're the legislative body of this city. And you're the one that makes the rules and regulations. And the mayor and his employees, including the city administrators, enact upon that and administrate that. And for them to be telling the council what they should do, what they should plan for and everything else, I don't find it acceptable. I didn't vote for those people. And I don't want them making the decisions for me. And I'm sure if a lot of people wouldn't have understood it, they would feel the same way. So I really want to know why and an answer why this was released and why this wasn't taken to council, and the council being given a chance to speak for the people they represent. Thank you.
I can just say, Ro. Can I say something? No, I just, I just, I feel for you. I really do. And I think the council is actively with the homeless response committee. I think the council is making the decisions to move forward in this manner. And maybe not all the council, because the committee only has so many members on it. But the committee is made up of council members, and we need to move forward. Honestly, we need to, we need to move forward. We need to be able to move forward so that we can get this problem under control. Continuing to do nothing is not gonna get us anywhere. So, and I'm not jumping on board. I'm saying that the council is the one making the decisions here. So, and we're actually gonna talk about that later on today. Thanks.
I'm on the, out there in the lake, and she's lived and loved her for one time, and she knows everything. So, I trust her. I've been told that it's gonna be a wet shelter out there. And we've had these community town hall meetings that they held back, you know, over the last year. And you've heard what people have had to say. And I don't think anyone feels that a wet shelter is a good idea. I hope and pray that you can have rules and you can enforce them, and it won't be a mess like it was over here. I mean, it was right under your feet here, and it couldn't be controlled. And the people that were giving security on it were afraid of the people in there and couldn't keep control of it. You know, if that didn't work, putting it out at Junction City is gonna be really, really difficult. And putting someone with very little experience, it's a new organization, in charge of it, is risky. So I just caution you to be careful. And I think the whole council needs to be involved in making this decision, not just three people on a committee, because this is gonna affect our taxes. And the city of Aberdeen is taking on the financial burden of this countywide problem without the help of the county. So you need to start thinking about what Olympia did to sue the county. I hate to say that, but you need the funds, and they have it, and they're just sitting on it. Please be cautious. Thank you.
I think also we have a whole, we have a group of organizations who are going to be helping us. But it's not just gonna be one person out there bringing it.
Good evening. Les Bolton, Word four. I've been watching this council for 34 years now. Just added up, 24 years as the executive director of the Historical Seaford and 10 as a citizen. And, and I've seen a lot of good things. And I've seen some bad times when we just really dropped the ball. And I wanna talk to you about that. One of the issues that where we've really dropped the ball is hotel motel tax funding. Hotel motel tax is a restricted fund. And within the city of Aberdeen, you're, you're limited in what you can spend that money on. And it's used to pay for advertising, publicizing, or otherwise distributing information for the purpose of attracting visitors and encouraging toward an extension. That money cannot be used to fix sewers or sidewalks or steps or anything else. Having that money sit in the bank does nothing for you, does nothing for the city, does nothing for the business community, and it does nothing for the residents. If you strategically invest that money through the hotel motel tax program and, or LTAC, as it's become, you can use that money, you can leverage that money with nonprofits and get a lot more bang for your buck. By working with nonprofits, they bring in outside resources, they bring in local businesses. So for the city, the benefits are that you're gonna be able to get more bang for your buck. You're gonna be able to generate successfully if you have a partnership. You have a successful partnership, you're gonna generate revenues that come back into the city as general funds. You know, you're gonna wind up with retail sales and increased business and occupation tax, those kinds of things. That money comes in, you can spend it to fix the sidewalks or whatever. The increased foot traffic, when we have events downtown, all the businesses clean up. You know, they clean up their little area. The increased foot traffic down there, and it becomes a better place to be. And you're gonna wind up having more residents go down and take a stroll downtown. We've got thousands of people that drive through town every year, and they don't stop. Because what is there to do? The more things that you have going on in this community, the more those people are gonna stop. And when they stop, they don't just stop for five minutes. They stop for 45 minutes, an hour and a half, four hours, a whole day. And while they're stopped, they're having lunch, they're drinking, they're buying things. And as, as we have these kinds of events, that benefit rolls back, the community becomes a cooler place to live, property values go up, and your property tax that you're gonna be receiving, that's gonna increase. And as an Aberdeen resident, I appreciate the fact that you're gonna have more money to spend, and it's not coming out of my pocket. Okay, so local businesses, you know, being able to have these kinds of events, it brings people in front of their doors. It allows them an opportunity to maybe do something special, fanatic, partner up. And, and again, for the citizens, it gives us something to do and be proud about our community.
That's three minutes.
Part of the reason I'm giving you this is I saw the article in the Daily World recently. And they talked about the Aberdeen Sunday Market, that it was started by a small group of women. And that's not true. It was launched by a small group of women. The people that wanted a market downtown were business owners. And they put together a team and said, "We wanna do something that's gonna tap into those people. They're coming back from the coast every week. What are we gonna do?" And we had a couple of meetings, a Tender Box, and we came up with a market idea.
That's, that's three minutes, Mr. Bolton.
Okay.
I'm giving my time. I won't speak again.
But anyway, I, I just wanna say that that market has been doing the job. It's been doing the job that it was intended to do. And it's a slow start, and I get that. But they're having a tough time right now. They're having a changeover in their staffing. And you gave them half the money that they asked for, and you're sitting on a whole bunch of money in the bank.
Sir, we'll have another opportunity for you to speak later, if you'd like to come back.
Okay.
But at this time, thank you.
If that's why I said, "Thank you."
Anybody else? All right, no more than one does a consent agenda. If, can we?
I approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the January 24th meeting, accounts payable payroll, and the January homelessness expense report.
Yes, second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I had a question for Chief Golding. He's got a second?
Yep.
On the reports that we get, it has information that breaks down the EMS responses, and then there's also fire response. When it's categorized as fire response, is that actually for a fire?
Yes, it's a fire category. So it's not necessarily, when you think fire, like a structure fire or a car fire, it could be anything from a burning complaint to an illegal burn, you know, something small like that.
But it involves?
Which involves a fire, yes, which is the vast majority of what those calls are.
Okay.
Very rarely are those a large incident, but you have those from time to time.
Right. Have any of them been problematic in terms of potentially expanding beyond creating a much bigger fire?
Not recent ones. You know, over the years, we have had instances of the Rocky Jude Building is an example of, you know, one of those fires that was actually a large-scale incident. So those do happen from time to time, but are infrequent.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor? I agree. Opposed? Passed? Thank you. Okay, Mayor's report. I just got a few little things here. First, I wanted to congratulate Council President Morrison for getting her certificate in municipal leadership. She had to, it's from the Association of Washington Cities, and she had to put in over 30 hours' worth of effort to get that certificate. So I wanted to congratulate her for that. And I also have, I was at the Transportation Authority meeting. I just, they said they're gonna increase the free, the wave route that we have currently. It's a downtown route that's free. They're gonna increase that to go over to the juvenile detention facility a couple of times a day so that students who are taking classes there can get over there. So they're gonna, once for sure, to drop them off, and then another one to pick them up. So I thought I'd let you guys know about that. And then I have the great pleasure today of announcing that Washington, the Association of Washington Cities for Quality Communities has offers a scholarship to students throughout the state who are really active and, and show great academic performance and caring for their community. This scholarship is a $3,000 scholarship. And, and then I got all these notes here, but it's really too much to read it all, so I'm trying to skim through it. Anyway, so Crystal Ramirez-Garcias is out in our audience, and she's the young lady from Aberdeen that was selected by our committee to represent Aberdeen in this. Three students throughout the state will be chosen in the end, and she's one of the candidates for that. So I just wanted to recognize that and congratulate her. She's gonna be moving on to Western Washington State University in Belling, Bellingham. And she plans to study so that she can be an elementary school teacher. Yeah, so anyway, it's, you wanna come up here and give your pitch, or take it? Got the top of my head.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone who supported me and you guys for choosing me for this scholarship. I'm really grateful that I could get to go to the finals. And yeah.
Okay, so council reports. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, from the Homeless Response Committee. And at the last meeting of the Homeless Response Committee, the committee formed two subcommittees that will draft a strategy and a communications plan. The strategy subcommittee will piece together the things that the Homeless Response Committee has already done, as well as a list of goals we are actively working on. The plan will include the committee's vision for shelter operations. The communications subcommittee will create a communications plan to ensure that we're all equipping all of our stakeholders with the most current information, planning future surveys and town hall meetings to check in with the community on our progress, continuing our lobbying efforts at the federal and state and local level, and to keep the council and our government partners informed. This group will also figure out a strategy to work with media partners, so on the radio, Daily World. The HRC finalized their legislative one pager. A legislative one pager is a quick reference document used for legislative and government partners who need to have a brief summary of our request, because we are going to need help with a camp location. We sent three committee members to speak with Representative Steve Ferenger, who represents our city and is the chair of the Capital Budget Committee. The goal of meeting with him was to request funding in the governor's supplemental budget to purchase a piece of property or renovate a building as a year-round homeless shelter. With a homeless shelter, we can enforce the laws. Without, without a designated location, we cannot enforce our laws. That's just the way it is. It's unfortunate, but the Boise case says that this is what we have to do in order to enforce our laws and to protect the city. And it'll also protect the unhoused population. Hopefully, we can get services to them, to get them help that they need. And our request was $2.5 million, although he could not fit more into the supplemental budget. This time, he did commit to revisiting this request when they began preparing the next budget. Rose Harbor County has drafted a request proposal to bring a year-round emergency homeless shelter to Rose Harbor. Commissioner Kevin Pine has worked very hard to bring this opportunity to us. This RFP fits perfectly with Aberdeen's need of a shelter. Once the RFP is released, there will be a short application window. And the Homeless Response Committee would like to apply for this opportunity. We will bring the recommendations and the strategy information to the council. City Administrator Clement spoke with a potential shelter operator to discuss the needs of the city and the scope of their offerings. This is the third potential operator she has spoken with. It's not just one group of people that, and they're, we'll seek other help as we go. We have to start somewhere. Ruth has also been communicating with the Department of Commerce's Homeless Housing Trust Fund staff members to keep them updated on our efforts to bring a shelter to Aberdeen. They have committed to informing us when funding becomes available after the governor's supplemental budget is released. Ruth will also track the funding cycle as well. There are several opportunities that we do have. And Ruth does keep up on all of this. I don't know how you do it, but I appreciate it. The HRC plans to invite all of Aberdeen's district's state representatives to attend an HRC meeting and learn about our goals. We are going to try to get help from every avenue that we can. There's a lot of money out there, and it's got, we have to take care of it. We have to. Director Stacy Barnum is waiting on the Portland Lou's Company's legal team to finish reviewing the leasing option for the city. Aberdeen will be the first city in the nation to hold a leasing agreement with the Portland Lou Company, and that's the outdoor potties that are easily sanitizable. They have a line of indestructible public restrooms. The HRC has heard from the business community that there needs to be public restrooms available downtown to reduce the amount of human waste in business alcoves, alleys, landscaping, and sidewalks. Our meetings are held at 5:00 PM on the first Tuesday and third Tuesday of each month. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns at all, we ask that you bring them to any member of our committee, and we'll bring it to one of the committee meetings and try and get answers. At the next meeting, we'll be reviewing our strategic goals and success measures and update them as needed. We will also be further discussing our strategic and communication. Thank you.
Do we have to, are you gonna, do we have to accept your report?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else?
Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with Greg DeBlanco and Kimberly Stoll, French Coastal Community Action Program, and get a tour of their building. I'd been there about two years ago. And so it was encouraging to see that a lot of work has been done, getting them closer to being fully operational out of their Aberdeen location. It was fully staffed this time, whereas last time, there was very few staff. And so it was really helpful for me to get to meet people, learn more about the 10 programs that they offer, find out that primarily most of their funding comes from federal sources, not county, not local. And, and to get some updates on, on their metrics for how they're helping families to find housing, including homeless people. Greg DeBlanco extends the invitation to my fellow council members and any of you who would like to know more firsthand to contact him. and arrange a meeting and a tour. I highly recommend it as getting insights into what they do and how they how they contribute substantially to our community. So feel free to follow up with him on that. And then the Grace Harbor Historical Seaport had a board meeting. There've been 10 applicants who've expressed interest in being appointed to that board. And the board is processing those applications and will present recommendations to the mayor and council to approve. Hopefully, currently soon. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Counselor Chris, President Morrison.
Thank you. This morning, council members Hodgkins, Newville, and myself, and I hope I didn't miss anybody. It was really packed this morning. I have the opportunity to attend the Port of Bray's Harbor's ninth annual business report breakfast. It was very awe inspiring to see how much work is being conducted across all of their facilities, including the port. The Westport Marina and sets of business park, they highlighted at length the Terminal Four expansion and redevelopment project, the investments that companies like AGP are making to the current T2 facilities, and that they're adding 40,000 feet of additional rail that's going to be added as part of their ongoing projects. They are smashing records at the port and they are really putting Grace Harbor on the map. The investments that they are making are going to ensure that Aberdeen and Grace Harbor are well suited to thrive well into the future. And for anybody that's interested, I brought an extra brochure that they were handing out this morning. Really informative about all the projects that they have going on, so I'll pass that around. And as the mayor said this week, I was really pleased to receive my certificate of municipal leadership from AWC. And I want to encourage each of you to take advantage of the opportunities and trainings that AWC offers. They have an entire suite of e-learning presentations on a wide range of municipal government issues. On their website, they're free, and they count towards credit to receiving your own certificates. They do several in-person events throughout the year, and you can meet and network with peers in other studies. So very, very advantageous to you. So that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I want to thank council member and homeless response committee chair Perachini for the report tonight. From the homeless response committee, I've been on this council now for about 17 months, and unless I missed it at a prior meeting, I think this is the first council meeting I've been at that we've actually had a report from the homeless response committee of any kind. We did have an opportunity to attend one of the workshops that was held at the Rotary Law Pavilion, gave council background on various issues, but I'd like to see, I don't know, maybe I should put this in a form of a motion, that we add a to our agenda, a regular homeless response committee report on our agenda for each meeting until or such time as the homeless response committee is dissolved. But I'd like to see it as a regular action report item on our agenda, and I so moved to do that.
Second.
I second.
Any discussion?
I guess we need to have more open communication about what's going on, being proposed, what has happened, what our thought process is that we go forward, and I think we also need, to the degree that any information that we're considering or involved in that can be made public. I know certain things, like if we're in the process of negotiating the purchase of property or something, you have to do that in executive session. Can't be readily available to the public, but anything that can be made available to the public, and we have people in the public right now who don't know what's going on, don't know what we have been doing or what is being considered. I don't know what's been considered already by the homeless response committee, and I'd like more information, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
If I could just respond, then we are heard at work and creating what you're asking.
I recognize. I appreciate that.
And we have two committees that have been formed to help with this work. I know I've been going through at least 18 months of meeting notes to compile everything that we've looked into and some of the decisions that we've made.
Thank you.
It's it's not going to be ready overnight. But but be patient with us, and you will get what you're asking.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm not, I'm not, let me be clear, I'm not asking for, although I'd like to see a full and complete action plan and proposal, but I'm not seeking that tonight. What I'm asking for to be added to the agenda is just a bi-monthly, bi-weekly update on kind of the next baby steps where we are in the process of things, what has happened, what the is anticipated to happen, kind of where things are in the whole process.
Would a would a monthly report attached to the monthly homeless report be acceptable?
Yes.
Just for clarification on that, that's not really an agenda item. Should we put it under council reports and its information provided by that committee that we can include in the agenda? We can do that.
An additional consent agenda item.
Special agenda.
Or it's a special agenda item, but as long as, you know, the homeless response committee, I understand, is an a-ha committee. Right? It's it's only been formed for, it has a limited life. It's not a standing committee of the council. So we have our typical standing committee, council reports, ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, at every meeting. But I'd like something specifically on the agenda to make sure we don't miss it that specifically addresses the homelessness issue and our response to that in our community. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, my hand down here. Just kind of maybe backing off of what council member Seedorf said. I've heard enough concerns from enough on council and some in the in the public about the forthcoming project. And while I appreciate council member Perachini's report, and I appreciate the idea of having these reports come to us, you know, every meeting or monthly or whatever, I think with the project of this scope, I think it would be beneficial for the council to maybe consider a workshop prior to presenting that proposal so that we can get all of those concerns aired out and hashed out before we go to the county, if that's possible. And we don't have to set a date tonight or anything. I just want to put it out there. Something to thank for. Thank you.
I know we tiptoed around the idea of all taking.
Could you talk to the microphone?
We tiptoed in the past around us all going to one of those, maybe some of the workshops before, so this is being brought back up.
Anybody else? Yeah, hey. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so I will, I love that idea of having a workshop. We'll have to see the timing of the when they put it out. It might be down further, so maybe we can squeeze that in. Because it is, it's a two-week term. It's like, from what I understand, it's going to be like a two-week turnaround. So we can have like an emergency.
About cheating, I noticed yesterday, they had said that the window for the RP closing was going to be the mid to end of April, so I feel like we have a little legal down there.
That's good to know. That wasn't what was really to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, the Parks Board met.
Oh, wait, we have a motion on the board? To add, oh, yeah, can you report it on a monthly basis on the agenda?
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. And we've already had discussion. All favored?
I agree.
opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the Parks Board met for about two weeks ago now, just a couple of dates for you guys. The Parks Department will be partnering with Aberdeen Senior Center to provide senior recreational programs this year during the phrase almost a month ago now. The Little League Field Concession Building and Babe Ruth Field Concession Building both had frozen lines break at Pioneer Park. And the property known as Garley Park is owned by the Aberdeen School District. The Garley Park easement expires on June 30th of this year. City staff will meet with the Aberdeen School District to discuss options for a new easement term. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I also want to point out for the senior center. So I located a piano forum. I know that a lot of the seniors have been, I go there every morning with my dog, so they've asked us if we could find a piano. When we found one for their stage, it'll be dropped off Friday. Anyway, it's part of giving them something else to do other than just, I think they have a cribbage term and then. All right, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to a request for council action, finance, excuse me, finance committee chair.
Staff reports. Staff reports.
Oh, did I miss something? Okay, sorry. Staff reports first.
Thank you, mayor. This week, the mayor and I met with Representative Derek Kilmer. We were able to discuss his priorities for the next 11 months while he's still in office, and then also to present the city's priorities, which included the levy project, a homeless shelter, and there was one other item, I forget. But we we were able to kind of go over our priorities that way. We also met with our local region Department of Transportation team, and we have a quarterly meeting with them. And we discussed the homeless property. As you know, DOT maintains the bridges there as well as the property directly underneath the bridge. They own that that portion of the properties, and so we were able to kind of discuss where our work intersects. I also did provide public comment at the commissioner, county commissioner meeting, as was stated earlier, to encourage the county commissioners to pass the shelter funds that they, RFP, that they will be presenting next week at the full amount of $500,000. And then I also wanted to encourage you, if you would like to set up a meeting with Craig DeBlanco, please email me. I'm happy to kind of like coordinate with him to get that scheduled. It would be nice to just have like one group meeting with Craig so you can check out what CAP is up to. CAP has been a great partner, especially in providing funds to turn our customer, water customers who have had their water turned off for delinquent payments. So they are a great resource for a lot of people in this community, so. Are there any questions with what I've reported? All right, thank you.
Any other staff reports?
Thank you. Is this on?
No, it is. Becca just had to turn you on.
So I put on all of your desk report from community development. And kind of for those that weren't able to attend the workshop that we had last week at the law pavilion, all the departments kind of had a gave an overview of what it is we do and kind of what our goals are and what we've been working on. So that is included in this packet. Try to keep this short and sweet. 2020 was a really busy year for community development. We typically process a lot of permits and a lot of commercial permits. So what you're seeing is a culmination of several different victims that came in through the years, such as AGP, continuation of Gray's Harbor College, the addition of their building, Five Star, lots of new housing projects as well. So the numbers that you have are kind of the first sheet where it's just a plan review. It shows that it's a small page like this. It's for all of community development, so it shows just for what we brought in for revenue for the department minus expenses and then what we turned back over to the general fund this year. So yay, community development, that was big. A lot of money turned back over to general fund. The second year is just the second sheet, which is a little bit more detail, is just the building division. And it just kind of goes over what we process plus the permit numbers that you have. The next sheet is code enforcement by cases, so you can see, and these are the cases that we've actually closed through the year. If you want additional details, we'll be providing that to you in a quarterly report from code enforcement. There's a lot of information that I think would be beneficial to you that you haven't been getting, but we will be getting that to you. What this doesn't reflect on code enforcement are the cases that we get that come in through building and public works. So those aren't tracked through our code enforcement cases, but we do post for public works and for building when we have violations going on. So that does eat up a lot of code enforcement as well. And then the final sheet I wanted to throw in because this includes all of the permits that we issue at the city, including public works. So for all of the year that you have, we brought a million, over a million dollars in revenue to the city. So your bidding departments are important. We make sure that life, health, safety, and their buildings is valued. Part of that also includes your property rental. That program is still going quite well. We've got a lot of people registered. We are doing inspections every three years. We we switch on. We have three sections of the city that we perform those inspections in, but we try to make sure that our rentals are for life, health, safety, that they are rentable and livable. Not everybody is registered. We do work through that process as much as humanly possible. But we are down a person right now as our building official. And so we're we're a little behind, but we're making progress. So that's a really good thing. This year, we'll be finishing up working on the zoning code. That's the last major plan that we have left to go. We started working on that last year. We hope to have a draft out sometime in May with final adoption probably by July or August, somewhere in there. But we're heading way, and that's really important. You remember, we finished up the comprehensive plan in 2021. Last year, we finished up the Shoreline Master Program as well as updates to the critical areas ordinance. So it's been quite busy. And this year, I I'm not sure we'll see as many of the commercial permits that we've seen in the past. But what's really encouraging are we're seeing a lot of housing projects. So we continue to be busy working with new developers and looking at property and hopefully we'll see some new subdivisions come in for housing. If you have any questions, I know this is a lot of information. You can call anytime. We're available. If you'd like to come in and learn a little bit more about what we do, please, you're more than welcome to just give me a call.
Can I ask you a quick question, Lisa?
Sure.
So my understanding is there's there's they're trying to rezone. So because there's a shortage of housing, so you could have a rental on your property. Does that sound familiar to you? I know that they were doing this in Seattle.
We're not rezoning.
We're not rezoning.
No, we're we're in the process of doing the zoning code, which eventually will change zones within the city. Currently, right now, we have for the last 15 years, you are allowed to put a rental on your property in a single-family zone. We, that was permit, we changed the code, I'd say 15 years ago. And mostly it was for the mother-in-law type units on, but people can rent them. There's no, no problems with that.
So you can do that on your.
You can do that.
You get a permit for it.
You just have to get a permit for it. That is correct. You will, a lot of the, if you're following any of the legislature, that happened in '23, a lot of it revolved around housing. That doesn't apply to us in Grace Harbor because we don't plan undergrowth management. So a lot of those regulations did not flow down to our area. But that also means that a lot of those tax credits aren't available to our area as well. But we are, Ruth's been working with the legislature. We're trying to lobby to get them to recognize rural areas as being important. We may not be growing enough to support growth management, but we're definitely growing enough and filling the housing pitch that if we could have some of those housing credits, you know, we'd see some additional housing come in as well. One of the changes we are looking at with the zoning code update is some changes to the housing and what can be allowed in what was typically our single-family residence. So we have been talking about that, and there will, you know, there'll probably be some definite proposed changes coming from that. Thank you. You're welcome. I encourage you to. I I know we have a committee from city council that are part and partner with the mining commission that attend. Partner partner with the planning commission that attend those zoning code meetings. But I post them online and I'll bet I'll try to be better about reminding everybody. But you're more than welcome to zoom in or attend those if you'd like. There are public meetings anyway, so they are posted as a public meeting. So I don't think there's an issue with you attending. You don't get a vote or anything like that because what comes to you, you will vote on. It's just going to be a recommendation from planning commission. But the next meeting we have will be February twenty ninth, and I believe we're doing that one at five o'clock. But I will, again, I'll I'll send an email out to all of you and it will be posted online, meeting links. And the consultants that we have that are working with us will be zooming into that as well.
Could you sign on the calendar or SPB plan?
Yep, sure, absolutely.
All right, thank you, Director Scott. Anybody else? No, okay. Now we'll move on to council action with the Finance Committee Chairs, Theodore.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance has three reports. First report is from the Parks Director requesting that the city council authorize. The surplus of the Parks Department's nineteen ninety four Ford half ton pickup truck to be sold at public auctions. And the proceeds deposited into the Parks Department Equipment Rental Reserve Fund. I move to accept this report.
Been moved in seconds. Any any discussion? Call in favor? Opposed? Passes?
Second, we have a report from the Parks Director requesting that the city council authorize the surplus of the Parks Department's. Two thousand three Ford IT dump truck to be sold at public auction. And the proceeds deposited into the Parks Department Equipment Rental Reserve Fund. I move to accept this report.
Thank you.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
And then the final report is from the Parks Director recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign the sixteen-month lease agreement. With Big Belly Solar LLC, and this is for some trash receptacles. In the downtown core, and there's a dollar figure error on the report that initially came out to council. The total amount should be forty six thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars, not what was earlier originally shown. And I move to accept this report with the amended figure.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I understand there's a real need. Business owners in the downtown have been clamoring for some better trash receptacles. These will be ones that people can't, they'll be secured. You can deposit trash into them, but you can't get into them and get trash out. And they'll have alerts on them to know if city staff will know if they need to be emptied. Also, I guess La May is going to be emptying them on a regular basis. And it's my understanding that Grace Harbor Transit already has.
Yeah.
One or two of these or some of these.
They have two down, two at the bus.
Going to be, if you're interested in seeing kind of what they look like and how they operate, you know, you can go over there, check them out. But it looks like it's really something good and hopefully will help our downtown and hopefully help keep it a little cleaner.
Yeah. All right. Any more discussion? Call in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Public Safety with Councilmember Hutskey.
So we've got Aberdeen Police Department report here. They had a busy month. So their activity report was four thousand three hundred and eighty calls so far for this year. That's up from three thousand six hundred and sixty at this point last year. So they're getting a lot more calls. A total of one thousand twenty-four proactive traffic stops. So they're up twenty-three percent and they're finding still people who are driving intoxicated. So be careful out there. We have a VIP, our VIPs who drive around in the evening, just kind of looking for for problems and report to the police. And they volunteered two hundred and fourteen point five hours in January. That is a total contribution of three thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars to the city that they're volunteering of their time. They were grateful for their enthusiasm and their desire to improve our community. And that the police actually handed them a photo of someone who broke into an ATM. And they, while driving around, they actually saw the person, called the police, they picked them up. And so they're actually, you know, doing good, you know, helping the police find people that have actually committed crimes. So that was pretty exciting. So yeah, shout out to them. I don't know who to thank for that. They give me a name. So we responded to eighty-one calls on on State Street and River Street in January. So they had eighty-one calls out to the account on State Street and and River Street. And the traffic safety data from Sixth Street and B Street. So this is a school zone where people are driving. So Sixth Street, since June eighteenth of twenty-three, they'd had a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, a little bit over that. Vehicles, average speed twenty-four miles an hour. So that's about fifty-three percent below average speed limit. They've got about seven hundred cars traveling on Sixth Street a day. That's why they call it I six. And there are a lot of children walking on that road. So they're fifty-three percent below average. So we can probably work on getting the rest of them to get a little bit slower. On V Street, this was really surprising to me. Since October of twenty-three, they had a total of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Six hundred and ninety-one vehicles on the average speed, twenty-four miles an hour and it's twenty-five there. And they have an average of two thousand vehicles a day on that road. And they, it's an active school zone as well, and fifty-two percent were below speed limits. So we still need to work on that a little bit because about half of them are below and half of them are probably above. So on personnel items, we have a couple of officers that were released to go solo. So that's exciting. Officer Weedman and I hope I pronounced that correct, and Officer Fall, they're out on solo now. And we have another officer, Roden, who was released for probation and given permanent status as a police officer on February sixth. So he was hired in July and he graduated from the Academy in February. So that's a police report. And then City of Aberdeen Fire Department, they had five hundred and seventy-one incidents. In in their calls and year-to-date, that's up a little bit from last year. Last year was five hundred and forty-three, so they're getting more calls. They're really busy. I just happened to ask, how much busier are they than Hoekwam? Because I drive out past Hoekwam's fire department and they never go anywhere. So they're twice as busy, you know, they're twice as busy. So give them a pat on the back when you see them. AMAS responses, they had forty this month. Fire responses, nine, so they had a total of forty-nine. And that was to the unhoused community. In January, overdose responses, they had twenty-two incidences to overdose responses for the unhoused community. And they have seventy-two public contacts made, eleven home visits made, twenty-six patient referrals for proper care and ten business inspections. All of that was done by Mitch Houston, Superman. Seventy-two, eleven, twenty-six, ten. That guy is working overtime. So he's our fire service specialist. So if you know him, give him a pat on the back. So they got one vacancy and there's a second one coming open in April. So if you know anyone who wants to be a firefighter. Send them their way. And that's it for them.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Hutskey. Next will be.
Actually, Public Safety does have one. I don't want the answer. Sorry. Go ahead, Debbie. Do you do, or do you want me to?
You go ahead.
Okay. All right. So Public Safety has a report from the Fire Chief recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Amendment between the City of Aberdeen and FCS. I'm going to accept this report.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Question?
Yes.
So what is FCS?
Steve, would you like to come up and elaborate? Thank you.
FCS?
Yeah.
Financial consulting services.
I apologize. I didn't read this report.
That is the company that we're using as the results for our cost of service study, so.
Got it.
Yes.
Yes.
Just to clarify the point, there's no change in the rate structure. It's just running a little bit longer than anticipated in the study. So this is just extending their their services.
But with the extension, it's going to cost more?
No, there is no cost. No, no change in the cost.
Okay.
Yeah, the the contract is still the same except for the length of.
All right. Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, call in favor?
I.
I oppose. Motion passes. Okay. Sorry, I keep getting out of order, but now we'll go with Public Works and Councilmember Lawrence, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would start with the public hearing. This is the date set for a public hearing on annual project plan for the transportation benefit district. For the year twenty twenty-four, I move that we adopt this public hearing.
Second.
Then there's been a person. Second, is there any discussion? Oh, sorry. Public hearing is now open. Now is there any discussion?
We don't have to move to open the public hearing.
We need to vote. Oh, sorry. Okay. I know. I have notes here I need to read. So let me let me read them. Okay, so all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, that passes.
Public hearing is now open.
Oh, the public hearing is now open. This is my first one, sorry. So members of the audience can get up and. Yeah. You're right on. You don't worry about this to me probably, so.
All those wonderful notes that you guys have. So at least that helps, you know, what was going on?
So this is your opportunity just to speak on the project plan for the transportation benefit district.
Yeah.
We'll have another session to speak about anything else.
That's about the trend, the what?
The project plan for the twenty twenty-four transportation benefit district.
Transportation what?
Benefit district. That's that's what we're talking about right now.
New street project.
Did you want to talk about this or you want to come back at the other open, the next?
Cleaning up projects, is that where they get people off the road and stopping from sleeping on it? Or is this where we're hopefully improving the the ruts in the road?
This is the plan for that?
Yes. Of plans and that. Okay, because. I need to know how you go about to get the city to come out and. Put asphalt or something in the in those ruts. Because we have some really bad ones that are supposed to be city streets.
But that's something you can address when you're in open public comment.
Because I I didn't know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Thank you.
That's why I need a better agenda. I know. What's going on?
Any other comments on this?
I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
Yeah. Any discussion on that? Call in favor?
I. I.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed.
And now we move on to some reports. Report, Public Works recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign. The interagency agreement between the City of Aberdeen and Washington State Department of Enterprise Service of the Project Management. And remodel of the Aberdeen Library Building. I move to read out this report.
Second.
Good person second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion passes.
And a report from Public Works recommending the city council authorize Public Works Director to execute the supplemental agreement. Number two with HDR for the US one-on-one.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, good. Report adopted.
Report from Public Works recommending the city council authorize the mayor to execute work order number six. With Mall Foster and On Gi Inc. to provide construction administration support. For the Fry Creek Respiration Project. I move that we adopt this report.
Second.
Moving second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? All right, report adopted.
Reports from Public Works recommending the city council authorize the Critical Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project be awarded to Roblons Inc. And that the mayor be authorized to execute the contract agreement. I move that we adopt this report.
Second.
Moving second. Is any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Report adopted.
And reports on Public Works recommending the city council authorize a make and execute task order number eight with Gray and Osborne. For Critical Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. I move to read out this report.
Second.
Moving second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? This passes.
Yeah, a resolution, a resolution approving the annual project plan for the transportation benefit district for the year twenty twenty-four. Move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Move and seconded. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted.
City Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five.
That's all from Public Works, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we go to Council President Morrison for special agenda items.
Special agenda item tonight under appointments for the park board. I'd like to move that Brian Buzz Scott be appointed to the park board.
Second.
Moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Appointed.
Mister Mayor.
All right, so now we're going to go back to public comments.
I can't have my shoes on, but my feet hurting from working all day, standing on them.
You should always do what smells comfortable.
Oh, okay. Well, I've been standing in the mud doing the plumbing and my tennis shoes got really bad. And several times they got stuck in the mud. So when I would get up, the sewer would stay there and I would walk in the mud. My feet hurt a little bit. Okay, I was just wondering, I know that a couple of years ago. I don't know who does it, but they came out and filled up the big potholes. One of them, really, really bad, is the street's called Lawrence. And it's. On one side, it's a mobile home park. And then there's Evans, which there's a few potholes, but not bad. But on Lawrence, you come down Lawrence and you turn to go into park. And there, we all laugh and say that we call it Lake Boulevard. And that was going to put fish in it, so we can all go fishing, but they're really, really bad. And I remember one year, they said, well, we we were going to come out there and fix it. Well, last year came and gone and it wasn't fixed. And they're worse now. And so I was just wondering. Who and and is this going to happen? The other question was, I remember during the big hole snap that lasted about a week, which was horrible. Because so much plumbing, that the council had talked about agreeing to pay for three thousand dollars for a tent. For the, whatever you call it, non-home people, the people to help them during that time. I don't remember a tent going up. And so did the money, if the tent didn't go up, which I didn't see it anywhere. Did the money go back into whatever fund that it was coming out of?
The money wasn't spent. It was just like a just in case. Yeah, it was it was never allocated out.
Oh, I didn't know. And so I thought.
Yeah.
Where's the tent? I didn't see the tent, but you know. I have did, well, now we can, what happened, the money doesn't go back in?
It would, it would never went out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it never went out. In fact, I would. Yeah, it never went out, in fact, what, what ended up happening was the more right group and the Union Gospel Mission worked together to make sure that. They were covered day and night so that people could see each other, so.
It was, it was down to seven degree and a lot of the park had broken water pipes that, um, I was very. Okay, well, thank you, and that was it.
Thank you.
I, and I really enjoyed coming to the city council meeting.
All right, is there any other public comments? No? Okay, um, we'll close this. Public comments, is there any council members with anything that's for the good of the order?
Yeah. After discussing, a discussion yesterday during yesterday's public worth committee meeting. I move to repeal Aberdeen Municipal Code thirteen point five six point five one five. It's following the public hearing requirements authorized the public works director. To immediately begin the process of fluoridation removal from our water supply. This motion is made in response to growing concerns among residents regarding the presence of fluoride in our water supply. It is imperative that we address these concerns promptly. And ensure the safety and well-being of our community members by repealing. The existing municipal code and authorizing the public works director to initiate the removal process. We demonstrate our commitment to prioritizing, prioritizing, prioritizing public health and safety. I urge my fellow council members to support this motion and take proactive steps towards addressing this supporting issue.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, um, now we're opening it up for discussion. I'm sure.
Um, Councilmember Lawrence, this is a pretty major topic to bring up at the end of our meeting and without any context. Around, um, the public health implications of, um, removing fluoridation from our water. Um, I know that a lot of dentists recommend having fluoride in the water. But I'm also aware that it's a somewhat controversial topic and I would, um. I would like to see this motion rescinded so that, um, we. That you come back to us perhaps with more information that, um. We can base a vote on, um, this isn't, this should not be a snap vote that we make tonight. Uh, there are just many aspects to it that I know I would like to understand further.
I concur with Councilmember Ellis has kind of blindsided us, I mean, I had no idea. This would be brought up tonight and I have no information, I don't even know if the correct code was cited, don't have my opportunity to read all of that yet. Um, there's no way I could vote to support such a motion tonight.
Do you bring up forward, the, the motion had to be brought forward for investigation to be done. So that you can have the numbers you're requesting.
So the motion on the floor is to authorize the public works director to investigate what it would take to rescind the current municipal code, is that correct?
From discussion yesterday, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment, this is from, uh, somebody comes from a really poor family in the harbor. And, uh, we didn't have like, uh, opportunity, I'm, I'm just speaking for the people who live outside the city. It may be a lot of the poorer people live in the city, uh, we didn't have opportunities to have toothbrushes and toothpaste. And, uh, we weren't really taught all of that, um, but I still have almost all my teeth. And that's a di- direct result of fluoride being in the water that.
The fluoride hasn't been in the water since two thousand.
Oh, has it? Have really good teeth, sorry.
Cuz mine are really bad.
I did, I just, I just see that fluoride is, is in there for, for public health and.
And I'd like to speak.
Okay.
During, during the public worst committee, we pretty much. Were told that it would be difficult to get someone to come and speak for or against it, it's kind of a. Like we were to request someone from the Health Department to come in, they can't really speak for, I guess it comes down to our personal opinion. That if we choose to take fluoride out, then it comes out of our basic understanding, it's not. An absolute decision for everyone, if, if some people don't want it and some people do. And there is opportunities for it is, is rarely available. In. Toothpaste. Toothpaste, may, many other forms now, and it, it just comes down to a decision that we made. The, the analysis that we request, there really isn't much we could get back from any source. Unless we were to ask like an industry to come in and speak, and then that would be their, their personal opinion, that it's, it comes down to our personal choice. The science is that we, we know that fluoride is, you know, can help teeth, but we don't know. There's, there's a lot to it. Say like I have a special needs child and we don't know what, what fluoride in the water does to her, she doesn't have the ability to process heavy metals. So for all we know, it could be, you know, affecting her behavior, we'd never know because of enforced that fluoride in the water. So it comes down to, we can, we can either begin a quest for analysis that's gonna come back pretty much to, we'll be in the same spot we are now. We will decide either do you keep fluoride in the water or do not.
I think, yeah, we might be, even if it's the same, we'd, we'd be more educated if we had some reports.
I, I'm going to amend this motion. So that, um, it authorizes the public works department to research. Um, the implications of removing fluoride from the water supply. Um, I just don't like the idea of at this time approving, um. A process that repeals having water and, I mean, the fluoride in the water. Before we've had any kind of report done.
I second that motion.
One thing I could say on that is that many other counties and state and counties are removing it. And then we are the only, the only two in our county that have it is Montana, San Antonio, and the rest have already made the motion to remove it.
I would also like Council President Morrison had her hand up, I would like to hear her opinion. Hey, I was just gonna echo what David just mentioned, that there's only two cities in all Grace Harbor that still fluoridate their water and that's. Aberdeen and Montana, and I think a lot of people aren't aware that, um. The floor, a lot of fluoride that is used is an industrial waste product. I think it's worth at least investigating and I'm glad to see that the public works committee is at least picking this up to. Investigate it and let the public works director start that process, I, and I'm sure it would have to come to council. Again, with the research, with the analysis, you know, before any major decisions were made, so I fully support this.
Rick's.
Point of order, point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, so I have a motion that's been seconded on the floor to amend this motion. Um, we need to vote now.
To amend to how?
Well, we need, we, you have the motion, we're, we're discussing that, um, or me. Okay. So are we going with the first motion, the first motion? Which is the last you made it. Okay, so we're, we're amending it, that's what we're voting.
Voting to permit, to authorize public works to. Do some research as to what the implication would be to remove fluoride from the city water.
We still have the original motion on the floor that David made.
She's voting to amend it to just be the authorized research and report back.
We've got Rick online right now, pretty much tells what we can expect.
Rick, do you have any, her, any comments?
Yeah, do you hear me?
You're muted.
Do you hear me now?
Still muted. Or, it's, we're not getting any sound.
Is the television turned up?
If we can't get him, he's here, right?
In, in a sign language.
For the ASL.
Couldn't you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, a little.
Okay, so it's obviously my headphones. So, um, yeah, it, it, it came to our, uh, committee yesterday and this is the recommendation that we made was that. It, uh, that David bring a motion to the council to, uh, have.
Rick, can I stop you right now? We're still having audio issues and most of us can't hear you, just a moment, thank you.
Say something now, Rick.
Something now, Rick.
Better.
Better, okay, so. Um, David brought this, uh, this, uh, idea up last night at our public works committee and we advised him that the best option would be. Cuz it, it could be controversial, do you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so that it, because it could be controversial, that he bring up a motion at council asking us to investigate it. That, that was the intent of, of, of David's motion was for us to just investigate it, we haven't done any research. Um, I don't have any information, he was asking questions, I don't have that information, so we were, that's what we were asking to do. And, and we're happy to do that, we just wanted, since it's a, it's kind of outside the purview, we wanted to make sure that the council was on board. With us investigating it before we spent a bunch of time on something that wasn't even gonna be supported by council.
So that's what my amendment addresses.
Right, other plans, if the vote failed, then we're gonna send up a second motion to ask for, for analysis and analytics coming.
So I call, call for the vote.
All right.
So what are we voting on?
We're voting on the motion to amend the first motion.
Can you clarify once more what that is?
Yeah, it's a motion authorizing public works to research the implications of removing. Fluoride from the city's water system and report back to council.
You called the question, but I still have some questions to add.
Called the question.
She called the question.
Discussion is done.
Discussion is done, okay, so all in favor?
I.
I. Oppose. All right, it passes. Okay, that was public comment, right? Oh, that was good at the end.
Good at the end.
Okay.
Now, how, why was our motion, you know, we had a motion on the floor and couldn't that have been here?
Our motion passed and amended.
But why wouldn't we vote on the original motion, just cuz if we have enough voting members now to pass it, why couldn't we?
Because they got amended, and so the most recent supersede was the first.
If it got voted down, then you need to go back to the other one.
Okay.
Thinking both want the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We're just trying to see.
So any, any, I hear what you're saying, any hiring of experts or anything like that? Will, those are non-budgeted items, those will have to come before you, so you will. Be everything, at this point, it's going to just be staff research and we'll keep you informed on what will be included. In this, well, we have to figure it out, we, I don't know that we've dealt with this before, so.
And it gives us time to do our own.
Okay, thank you, um, so now, uh, Council President Morris.
Okay, at this time, I move that the city council recess into executive session. For up to forty-five minutes, action is anticipated after the executive session. The purpose of the executive session is in accordance with RCW forty-two dot three oh dot one one zero. Be, be to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase from public knowledge. Regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. And to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease. From public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of a decreased price. However, final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public.
Hmm.
All right, um.
You have a second.
First and second, is there, can you just do a discussion with this? No, okay, good, all in favor?
I oppose.
We're on executive session, we'll be back, yeah, eighth, you know, one.
So we'll go into the conference, right, and go in the committee room.
Just now twenty-one. I have a correction, we'll be back at seven forty-two, oh, excuse me, eight forty-two, sorry.
You have to go tonight, right, at seven twenty? Still, you're good digital and I think. They have one that you can do remote, three minutes too.
They have one that you can do remote, three minutes too. Five minutes.
So what is the plan? Do you want to give us also what the threshold is? Or some of like the jail rocks here?
No, that you have to mean it's full code.
Yeah.
So that's all the stuff that is just city code. Yeah, but it's not just criminal stuff. There's none of that like fluoride and waters in there.
We're extending executive session additional 10 minutes. They'll return at eight fifty two.
Okay.
Are those cameras?
No.
We're extending executive session for an additional 10 minutes. They'll return at 9:02. Let's go 10.
The hook one.
Police haven't been called yet.
Take him to the hook one.
Extending our executive session for additional 10 minutes. They'll return at 9:12.
Well, I don't know.
Is that correct?
We can be in the meeting?
Second.
I know.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, it's now 9:05 and we'll reconvene this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion to authorize the sale of the surplus properties list.
Second.
Second.
It's been seconded three times. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Uh oh.
Do your thing, Jeff. Come on.
You're right. Tell us we're done. Yeah.
I'm looking that we adjourn this meeting. Second.
All right, we need to adjourn. Eight minutes out.
I think, um, yeah.